Call this regular meeting to order call.
Mayor Queerum.
Here.
Councilmember Newman.
Here.
Gomez.
Here.
McCrankey. McCall.
Here.
Please stand and join us in plugging with you. Okay, so to get started tonight, we have the bulk of office, and I'm going to bring up Tom. Animal Control Position.
Tonight, we're welcoming Amanda Engelbrecht to the city of Princeton. Amanda's going to be our new Animal Control and Code Enforcement Officer, replacing Nancy, who had just retired. Amanda, this is a bio Amanda provided to me. So Amanda says she's proud to be raised on a small farm. After high school, she went to school to become a certified pet groomer. After graduating, she owned and operated her own grooming business in Kiwanis for five years. Then in the fall of 2015, she attended the Texas Academy of Animal Control Officers, graduating with basic animal control officer, animal cruelty investigation, shelter technician, and many other certifications. After returning home, she found a job as a veterinarian technician at Princeton Animal Care Clinic for five and a half years. She's excited to take over for Nancy, who just retired after many years as our Animal Control Officer. Amanda looks forward to the new possibilities this new position will hold for her and hopes to help out the city in her new role. I, Amanda Engelbrecht.
I, Amanda Engelbrecht.
Having been appointed as Animal Control Property Maintenance Officer.
Having been appointed as Animal Control Property Maintenance Officer.
In the city of Princeton.
In the city of Princeton.
The county of Bureau.
In the county of Bureau.
The state of Illinois.
The state of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Animal Control Property Maintenance Officer.
Of the office of Animal Control and Property Maintenance Officer.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Amanda, you don't have to sit around. Pete talked me into it. I was going to keep you. Okay, so to get started tonight, we have a public comment. Just need, make sure that green light is on.
Christina, there's a button on the top of the mic. If you want to try to hit it till the green light comes on. You see it?
There.
Does it tell the green light come on?
Okay.
Just need your name.
Okay.
And then you're off.
I'm Chris Compton, and my purpose for speaking tonight, first of all, I want to thank the mayor and the city commissioners for everything that you do. I respect you quite a bit, and I know it's not an easy job keeping everything in fiscal order. And I do pay attention, and this is the first time I've come through this council to speak on any item since I've been a resident for, gosh, going on 30 years. I live both in the outskirts of Princeton and also in the city limits. And so I've had both Republic services and I've had the city of Princeton. Both have done tremendously well. I, you know, I'm not here tonight to convince somebody to stay with what we got or to convince somebody to change. What I'd like to do is just bring up some issues that I've done some thinking on with cleanup days. Back in 2015, I don't know, you know, this was an article I found in the VCR, and it was back in 2014, 2015, that there was an issue brought up with the council about bringing back spring cleanup days. It was pretty vague, so I couldn't get details as far as why spring cleanup days might have been eliminated or why it was being brought back. At that time, they were allowing more items that could be picked up, like mattresses and stuff with city, and had a hard time with it. There was, you know, like I said, I think that should be investigated on why, at one time, we got rid of it and then brought it back. I also want to speak about the fact that we did lose, back in 2020, cleanup day for one year, which was understandable because of COVID and because of the drought and the storm. You know, nobody is denying that that was a wise, very wise decision. But taxpayers did, you know, put money into it that hadn't been used. In 2021, it was brought back in the spring, in March. And so naturally, you know, so the pandemic seemed to be going on the downside. We seem to be getting things in order. You know, people are of the opinion that we're going to have it again in 2022. My question being, with the bills that were sent out, was the notation that it was going to be changed to October of this year. And my question is, is that being changed so that if we do contract with Republic, it won't be this year because if we contact, contract with Republic, we can't afford to do spring cleanup days? And so that's the second time that we'll have lost it. The reason it's important to me to do spring cleanup days, especially because of the pandemic, I know a lot of people, if you talk to contractors, have been doing home maintenance, this home improvement. People are counting on that. You know, I honestly have a bedroom set in my summer room because, you know, I have nowhere to put it this time of year, and I'm not saying that I'm standing up here so that I get my bedroom set, but it's not the time of year to try to get rid of it. But people aren't counting on that service. So just like if we go to Republic and you found a way to bring back recycling, I'd like to ask that we find a way to bring back cleanup days for at least one more year, and then we can look at it again. If you say, well, the money for taxes, that was to buy an extra truck, so we don't have to buy the extra truck now, so we can't do spring cleanup days unless we buy an extra truck, my response to that would be, well, just like we split up the town in half, let's split it up in quarters. So it will take a little bit longer, but we can still get everybody served. I did a little research, and there's approximately, back in 2019, the city of Princeton had approximately 3,500 homeowners. Not every homeowner participates in spring cleanup day. But if I take that 3,500 and I divide it amongst the $10,000 that Joe Sess will save, we're talking about only spending $35 per household, which amounts to, you know, less than, you know, pennies for a week. It's not that much money to be able to do it for one more year, especially since we pay our taxes on it. And, you know, I know that the budget is approved in April and goes through the following year, March, so that we've got time, you know, you've got the money to use, and then we can look at saving that $10,000 in the next year, just so that people get a chance. You know, we could even do a marketing campaign. I was in radio for a lot of years, and also I was the tourism director. I don't know if anybody, if anybody's known that for a couple of years. A great marketing campaign would be, let's clean up our neighborhood. How much is it costing to do citations, or are we doing citations for people that have trash outside? You know, I mean, we could do a whole blitz on how to get rid of the trash during the spring cleanup days. You know, we've spent a lot of time, our main street looks wonderful. You know, as tourism director, I know, you know, about how the motel, hotel tax money works and how we use that money very wisely, again, to be commended. But I feel like it's time to start paying attention to our neighborhood. You have people coming into town and all of these great things said about the city of Princeton. When they get with the realtor and they're driving around, they can't find a place to rent that's suitable. You know, I just think it would be a great way to invest in our city would be to do a campaign and invest in our neighborhood. We need to take the same job that we did beautifying Main Street as beautifying our neighborhood.
Any other public comments? Just need for you to state your name.
Hi, everybody. I'm Pete Gertner. Live over on Thompson Street. My first question is, what is a property maintenance officer? What is she going to do?
Well, she's going to write up people who are not complying with the city code for property maintenance.
Okay, I've been listening to that for years, haven't I?
Pardon me?
I've been listening for that for years.
Yeah, we're getting smarter.
Thank you. Glad to hear of something. I'd like to go back a little bit. You guys killed the bomb, Ben, during COVID. Do people still have an asthma out there? My wife still has asthma. I don't think it should have been canceled. It was going along pretty good, but now, you know, there's no rules. So I'd like to see that reinstated again, maybe by fall. I'd really like to see that, so. And I learned this thing here. I don't know, you know, I'm going to be 79 years old in about a month. I don't think I should be handling my own stuff. What's going to happen, instead of throwing that 45 gallons of recycled out by itself, that's going to go in with my 20 pounds of garbage. Because I'm not going to waste my time and my health trying to get that. And I'm sure there's other people down feeling the same way about that. I don't think I should have to handle it. You know, it's, no, I don't, I don't think I should. I've been driving around, there's, I see solar things going up, big windmill and everything. You're going over by the fuel. You drive by Geneseal. We've got solar panels and a couple of wind turbines. And we've got, they say diesel engine over there makes our electricity. Why can't we think of something to, we could get a solar farm out here. And we've got an industrial park out there that absolutely nothing is happening to it. And I think we could probably get enough solar panel on it with maybe three or four windmills and cut our electric bills. If that's possible, we can do that with that land. I don't know what the lake is out there, the overfall lake. That's probably empty 90% of the time. Should we put solar panels in that and let it flood underneath it? We've also got the old dump out there. There are three places I think we could, you know, which you could prove me wrong. I'd like to see something like that get into work.
We're working on two solar projects.
Working on what?
Two solar projects in the city.
Are you going to get done them?
Not in your area, as you mentioned, but.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. You're in my area too, you know.
That's right.
Okay. Like the, over by Utica, they've got this cute little trailer that will tell you how fast you're going. And I understand that it can be equipped with a camera and everything else, we could, you know, give them the information they need. And I think we could invest in one of those. Never going to retire. You know, not going to take a holiday off. You can sit there and do what it's supposed to do. We can move it around town and maybe expose some of these people down, I don't know. But people are moving really too fast around here, and I never see anything in paper. You know, I never see a police report in paper on Princeton. So I'd kind of like to see if we could maybe get one of those, I don't know. They also have one over there that just stands there on a little post, and it'll tell you what your speed is. That one couldn't be moved around with the trailer down, so. But, that's, thank you.
Any other public comments? Okay, so we'll go on to the minutes, the commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve the minutes for our council meeting on January 17th, 2022.
Motion's been second, comments?
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCrankey.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
Mayor Queerum.
Aye. I'll go to approval of minutes, and I'm sitting here.
Invoicing me?
What'd I say?
I think it's minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, invoice.
Anyway, in the Department of Accounts and Finances, for this period, we have invoices totaling In the Department of Streets and Public Improvements, we have invoices totaling $131,246.10. In the Department of Public Safety, we have invoices totaling $196,822.6. And in the Department of Public Property and Utilities, we have invoices totaling $229,301.30, for a grand total of $615,691.30. There, all council members present have confirmed their reviews of all invoices, and now we're submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve the invoices as presented.
Second. Motion's been second, comments? For all.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCrankey.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
Mayor Queerum.
Aye. I'll go to regular business and see your flip.
Next on the agenda is the annual authorization of abasement of tax levy, consisting this year of Resolution R-21-007. This is for Bond Series 2013A, general obligation refunding bonds, alternate revenue source associated with the water tower debt. Also included is Resolution R-21-008, associated with Bond 2014-B. This is a general obligation refunding bond, alternate revenue source associated with the streetscape. Also included is Resolution R-21-009. This is Bond 2014-D, general obligation refunding bond, alternate revenue source associated with a TIP difference. Also included is Resolution R-21-010. This is for Bond Series 2019-A, general obligation refunding bond, alternate revenue source. This is associated with the Euclid Avenue rebuild. Followed by Resolution R-21-011. This is associated with Bond 2019-B, general obligation refunding bond, alternate revenue source associated with the logistics site. And finally, it includes Resolution R-21-012, with Bond Series 2019-C, general obligation refunding bond, alternate revenue source associated with the project for an improved sewer for First Street and Pleasant Street, all evading the 2021 tax levy. There, all council members have reviewed these resolutions, and they are submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve the following resolutions. Resolution R-21-007, R-21-008, R-21-009, R-21-010, R-21-011, R-21-012.
Motion's been second, comments? For all.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCrankey.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
Mayor Queerum.
Aye.
Just two things, quick, tonight, police pension reports are in your package for November and December. As I mentioned at the last meeting, they did trade this in the fire suspension, and that's been taken solidated. Police should have them in the springtime. And one last announcement, we did get formal notice from Chief, the Fire Chief Woolley, that he is planning to retire at the end of May after 30 years of service with the city and 10 years as our Fire Chief. So department heads are hard to fill, those positions, and especially his role there. So we do wish him the best, but he's going to keep some big shoes to fill, so.
Teresa. Three weeks ago, we announced a possible change in the way garbage and recycling is collected in Princeton. We feel that our current process is unsafe and inefficient. It's unsafe because we have two employees who ride in the back of our truck in extreme weather conditions, which seems to get more extreme than it's years ago by. And they were exposed to traffic. Last year, our truck was squarely broadsided, to the, two guys on the rear of the truck were thrown clear, both were injured, and both mistimed from work. I hate to think what might have occurred had the vehicle struck our truck further toward the rear. It's inefficient because we have three employees who work on the truck, the driver and the two on the rear. The only viable solution to correcting this is to go to a one-arm automated truck, which requires only one employee, the driver, which leads us to two options. One, we can contract the service out, or two, we can invest in the equipment and continue to keep the service in-house. We have a proposal from Republic Service, a private company, that provides us three options. Each option includes each resident receiving one or two totes, as the case may be regarding recycling pickup. Our one proposal is for garbage pickup only. The second proposal is for garbage and recycling pickup with a fee that would be paid by every resident. Both these options would be built to the city, just as it is now. The third option couples the garbage-only pickup fee with a separate recycling pickup fee that would be paid only by those who choose to have their recycling picked up curbside. The separate recycling pickup option would be between the resident and Republic, with billing from Republic and the payment fee directly to Republic. We are also looking at the city keeping the service. This would involve the city buying two new one-arm automated trucks and totes for every residents in town. We are also putting fingers together as to what it will cost for curbside recycling pickup, specifically for only those who want the service. The numbers are not yet finalized, but what we've had thus far is looking good. The bottom line is, we believe we can make this work by keeping the service in-house. As for the numbers between Republic and the city, they are competitive. But in the long run, we believe that the city can provide fees that will be much more attractive to residents. That's because the city's fees are designed to meet our expenses. We do not set fees to meet the profit. Republic does the same regarding meeting expenses, but they are a private company who is in the business of making money. So there is a profit margin built into the fees that they charge residents. So again, over the long term, our fees would be.
Can you take your mask off while you're reading? Thank you.
I don't have to start over going. I'll give you a copy of this. So again, they have a profit margin built into their fees that they charge residents, which is only fair because, again, they're in the business to make money. We're going to have Republic, we were going to have Republic present tonight, but the decision was made to cancel the presentation. Council members have been very busy the past three weeks. It's been a very active council. Multiple contacts were made with at least 11 nearby communities who contact, contract privately for garbage and recycling services, and we are going after information regarding their experience contracting with a private company. Information has been collected by individual council members and the city manager, but there have been no discussions as a council as a whole. The Open Meetings Act makes it difficult to have any type of free-flowing discussion among council members. So we want to take that opportunity tonight, a first-time discussion among all council members regarding what is before us. This is a, this is an issue that affects every resident in the city of Princeton, so it's important that we need to come together on it. Time is of the essence. We are in the midst of preparing for our new budget that goes into effect on the first. We want to resolve this issue well before then, so Teresa can include the numbers as she works the budget. So I will now open it up to the council members, and take your way.
Can I say something real quick before anybody jumps in here? As we went through, this is the mayor said, the last three weeks, four weeks, whatever it's been, I was going to say, so the public really understands that this council has put so much time into doing the homework, getting examples, listening to other communities. So I don't want to get wrapped up into the city councils not doing their homework sort of discussion, but they really are, and I want the public to know that. I'm impressed, I've never seen a council function the way that you guys have done. So I thank you for all of that. Thank you for all the questions you've asked, because I think we've done a pretty good job, so.
So as Teresa said, we've put a ton of time into this. Obviously, it affects everybody, not just us sitting up here. But, you know, there's a lot of moving parts that come into this, and no matter which side that we go towards, us, go towards the public, whatever it is, it's going to affect everybody, because we've done a good job, I guess, to this point of not raising rates. When you take on debt and you have to buy new equipment and things like that, it will affect everybody one way or another, sooner or later. So just know that there's both sides of that, no matter what, we're going to see, you know, see some changes probably. Looking over this, talked to a lot of different communities, friends of mine that are in different areas, to see their, their take on all this. I think what's important, what I look at is, I've been able to control it on our end, ourselves, I think is a plus for everybody. I'm open to anything, don't get me wrong, listen to both sides, but I like the idea of keeping control of it. I think the people I've talked to, it's a must-have. We've got to have curbside recycling, no matter what we do, that's, that's just got to be part of this. There's just no way around it. I just don't believe that if we put a dumpster out for recycling somewhere, or we tell you to take it out to the transfer station, we're going to have more garbage to pick up. And that's basically all it comes down to on that. You know, eliminating the two guys in the back of the truck, one way or another, we have to do that anyway. OSHA's not going to let that go too much longer anyway. We don't want our employees to be hurt. We have a lot of injuries every year. As Teresa has, you know, just said to all of us, put a lot of the work in, I'm the guy who's know why, what, you know, I've asked a ton of questions for financials, you know, what can we do here? What's it going to take here? You know, we've got a lot of numbers that we've got to throw around, but, you know, I'm always going to ask those questions, you know, whether we get in a situation like this, like Tulsa, we don't get an opportunity to meet on the side because it's not lawfully able to do so. So I think tonight will bring up a lot of good comments from everybody, but as a whole, like I said, I think I would like to keep it in-house, just for the pure fact that we can control what's going on and seeing what's in front of us and help keep it going, so.
So, one of the things that I have noticed is that everybody has had been very active in actually doing research on this. I have looked at a lot of the contracts that have been forwarded from others, from other communities, I've also talked to other people from, who have services with the public. And one thing I do know is that it's a city, it's like, this community that lives within the city of Princeton has to have a certain service that the city has to provide, as they are the ones that are actually paying everybody salaries. They are the ones that are maintaining the city of Princeton by paying their taxes and also being responsible citizens. One of the things that Mike had mentioned is, if it goes away, is the city has no control over it. And one thing you wouldn't want to do is go into a long-term, long-term contract that is beyond, because right after those 10 years, let's say five years, those rates are going to go extremely up. Because ultimately, any business is offered privately, to include some non-for-profits, those hospitals, their main goal is to make money, period. So, you know, I do thank everybody for doing all the work, and I know Teresa's been putting a lot of information out through councils and. a lot of information out through councils and diligently, but, you know, this is something that we really have to look at because it affects everyone.
I think it's time. I think, you know, we've been collecting trash this way probably for the last couple of decades. It's old-fashioned, it's unsafe, as the mayor talked about, and our equipment has aged and we're in a position where we need to make some big decisions. And this is why, this is what brought this to the table three or four weeks ago. There's something comforting about calling up a major contractor, a nationwide company, and saying, "Take this over for us, you're responsible for the whole thing, and wash your hands of..." We wash our hands of taking responsibility to pick up the trash. And to some communities, that has worked well for them. Princeton is unique because we provide our own utility services here now. We provide water, we provide sewer, we provide electric, and, and right now, we're still providing trash. And I think that we need to take a good, hard look at, if, are we capable, do we have what it takes to get in the garbage business? We have to spend a substantial amount of money to buy two trucks, we have to buy thirty-five-hundred totes that would be distributed throughout the community. It's all, it's a, it's an upfront first-time expense that we would incur, we would take out debt, and we would have to pay that debt off in five years. So these are all the big issues that we're looking at right now, is say, is this feasible? We think we can do a good job with it, we think we can be very personal and provide a level of service that Quentin here, his guys have provided over the years, that if you make a phone call because someone forgot to pick up your trash on a Tuesday, on Wednesday, my guy, he'll have one of his guys over there to pick it up for you. So, that's easy. National companies, maybe it's a little more complicated than that. I don't know for sure. I'm not being disrespectful to Republic, they're a big outfit for a reason, they're good at what they do. But we just need to decide, is this the time for us to say, "Let's fight the bullet, let's spend the money, let's get into this business, we think we can do it better." A lot of people think that we should. I have received a phone call this afternoon from someone who said, "Please don't give up your trash recycling business. You guys have provided service for the community, we'd like to keep it in-house and keep it amongst those of us that live here, and we should make all of our efforts to try and keep it in-house." So, as where we're at, big decisions, but we, again, we need to get this thing resolved in the next three or four weeks, between our budget setup and begin the process of either handing the business over to an outside contractor, or ramping up, spending the money, borrowing the money frankly, and going out and getting this equipment and get the ball rolling. So, that's kinda where we're at.
You know, when we started investigating on a lot of this, it was, you know, just something that none of us really had any idea about, just kinda got thrown in our lap. I enjoyed going and finding out what it was like that we're gonna spend the money on. So, I was lucky enough to be able to call up and go over to another city, City of Wyonett, and actually ride with them in their truck, and was really amazed at, at that particular vehicle, its ease of getting in and out and lifting garbage cans. And one of the options in the truck is that the compactor works all the time. And I know that means that there's moving parts and that may cause some more maintenance problems, but they never had to stop. So they didn't have to stop to compact the garbage, they would, that would go on all the time. So they, right off the bat, saved over an hour, just in the middle of Wyonett, picking up garbage because they never had to stop, so they could run their whole route the whole time. The truck was ambidextrous, so that if you wanted to be able to pick it up on, sitting in the regular passenger seat or the regular driver's seat, you could do that, the joystick for that, they had a joystick for if you liked to ride on the other side of the, as well as driving wheels. So, it was a, it was an update, modern vehicle, that I was really impressed with, we got to ride. And I even actually got to do the joystick, lift the garbage can, and in one try, I got it. So, I know that there'd be a learning curve in, in driving it, but the truck was amazing. I think it's some service that, that the city of Princeton provides its community. I truly believe that that, that's something that we need to keep in this city, something that is important to me. But, you know, like, what we said, we gotta, we gotta take a look at it from a perspective of, is it feasible? And so we are going about finding those things out. And Teresa's done a fantastic job of keeping us straight on the numbers, because it's a complicated process, and I really appreciate her efforts on that, and thank you very much for that. But, I, I just wanted to say that I just enjoyed doing that, and something that, as a council, they think that we should do that kind of diligence before we make a huge decision like this, so, thank you very much.
It's, it's huge, Marty, because this is not a two-year decision or a five-year decision. This is a long, multi-year decision. We just can't, you know, pull the plug after year six and say, "Well, let's go back to the way we were doing it before," if we make a bad, a bad decision. So we have to make sure we make the best decision and we do as accurate as we can.
Yes, and I believe that investment in the city also works that way as well, so that we build a way, if the investment's the right one, we're making a better decision for the citizens.
The idea of two trucks, we'd have to buy two of these vehicles. They're very expensive, and the reason why we need two is if one does go down, we have to have a backup, because if one goes down, we don't have a backup. These are ninety-five gallon totes, for the most part, that will be full, and it will just be too heavy, you know, to go around with an older truck and try to fill the, fill it up. So, the two trucks is the way to go. And somebody mentioned, you know, we'll be buying, you know, thirty-five hundred totes off the bat, and if we, with the, with the curbside recycling. It's interesting that, we'll be having to buy recycling totes for about fourteen hundred residents. It's interesting that Princeton, you know, we have thirty-five hundred homes, and only about fourteen hundred, a hundred of them actually recycle. That's about forty to forty-five percent figure. And it's interesting, you know, I find that interesting because Peru is at eighty, Sterling's at seventy, and there's a slew of communities that are in sixty to seventy percent recycling upon curbside. And I'm hoping that with the, going this route, providing totes, and larger totes, thirty-five or sixty-five gallon, that recycling pickup in the city, so. We'll have public comment at the end, just, you can speak again. So, good discussion. Anybody else have anything?
I'd just like to reiterate, Marty, and Teresa's done a phenomenal job with this. She's got a lot thrown into her, right thrown into her budget plan, right in the middle of the-
Her eyes are crossing.
Yeah, and it kinda gets thrown in, but she did, she did a great job and really produced some great results.
If I could just mention one quick thing, in, in the projection of the numbers with buying the new trucks, one thing I did factor in, because I don't ever want us to be in this position again, and Tom knows this with the vehicles, we've gotta get into a rotation with these vehicles, and that means putting money away each year, so we don't come up to that year where now we have to buy two new trucks, and we have to take out debt. We shouldn't have to do that, we need to be prepared for that going ahead. So that's one thing that I'm trying to do, my due diligence in making sure that we can do that, and what does it take for fees to be able to keep doing that, so we don't find ourselves in this situation in the future. So, we're trying to make sure we're in a good position before we make a decision like this, so.
And as, as I mentioned earlier, time is of the essence, because we are in our budget year, and we want this resolved before Teresa really, you know, puts the numbers together for the final budget. So, you're gonna be hearing a lot more about this, in whatever form you can get your information here in the next, you know, week or so, and so, we'll move forward. Okay, so, from the council, we have any old business tonight? Any new business? Public comment?
I guess I won't, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, say your name again.
Yeah, about your, how many totes you have? I'd have to have about fifteen of your totes for what I recycle. So you can't go by that little bitty box you gotta get to recycle. I've got a forty-five gallon container that's usually full, so.
You can get a ninety-five for recycling if you do curbside.
No, if it's ninety-five, I'm gonna throw everything in. I'm not gonna recycle anymore. See, that's simple. There's gonna be a lot of people do that. I don't know who I'm gonna get to get the ninety-five out of the curb. You know, wipe your shoes and do it. So, you know, I wanna have it compacted out, so.
Big, big, big wheels, regardless of which way to go, these totes have huge wheels and-
Little muscles.
Roll right on out of the driveway.
Little muscles, getting, getting stronger. Teresa, we haven't been saving money for a garbage truck?
Yes. Well, actually, last, this, actually this year that we're in right now, we did start to tack, we, we put in a dollar last year, and that was to start this fund, to be able to start putting it towards a garbage truck.
For the last sixty years that Tom's been here, we haven't, we haven't saved money for a garbage truck?
No.
Wow.
Haven't raised the rates enough either, in the past. And that's our, that's on us.
Are we only dealing with one garbage outfit? You can't get two of them in here, it can be big?
Well, that's, that's, that's another, that's kind of another issue at this point, is there is something-
Pretty much everything has been absorbed through the public here, which is one of the biggest waste management companies.
There's only one other garbage picker in the world, besides the city of Princeton.
Well, if you wanna, if you want them traveling to Princeton, it would be overhead and a few-
I don't care where they travel from, as long as I get a cheap price.
Well, you won't get a cheap price.
Well then, let's start throwing it on the street, and then let the street people break it up. You know? By the way, I forgot one thing when I was up there. I think we should put a stop sign at Carter and Thompson. That's a four-way stop. And I'm hoping maybe if we put a stop sign there, it'll get some people to go up to Park Avenue and take that street and get off to Thompson Street. And then you'll get the full effect of the zoom, zoom. I like that. Thank you.
Anybody else with a public comment? Just need to say your name.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I can only, I can only hear about what you people were saying. I do not want to put, take my recycling someplace else. At my age, I don't want to be driving when they're only open, and I don't have to pay extra, and how many, how are we gonna get rid of all these blue boxes around, thousands around town? I don't want mine after this.
Recycle it.
Recycle it. Good, you're not picking up recycling anymore.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, that's part of what we're discussing. We are, yeah, with, I'm sure that there's gonna be curbside recycling offered to the residents, regardless of what-
I wouldn't leave a load on this.
Well, well, we have, we're gonna be talking about it here in the next week or so, we have to come to a decision. So we'll have a first reading, I'm hoping, on whatever we do, two or three-
Is that gonna be in the bill counting Republican? And I'm speaking very loud, I'm hoping everybody hears me.
She hears you.
Thank you.
Thank you. In the public, just need to state a name.
My name is Jeff Loes. Can you guys hear me? Uh, two things that I'd like to say. I know that many council members have mentioned that, that Republic is in it for profit. I happened to be at the last city council meeting, and one of the first questions I heard a few of the council members ask was, "How much money was the city gonna lose if we went to Republic?" I just wanted to bring that up, that apparently they're not the only ones in it for profit. I did hear, you know, concerns about taxes that would be lost, or profits would be lost to the city, cost to the city. Also, what was mentioned earlier was that the city hasn't been raising rates enough, they haven't been managing the trash effectively at this point. So what I'd like to know is, if we do get into the trash business, how is that gonna change? Like, I just wanna make sure that there'll be a plan put into place, to where the rates will be raised enough to make all of this happen, because if you haven't been managing it properly so far, to be able to save for a trash truck, I just don't have faith that the city doing it themselves is a good idea. Republic does it very well.
Well, as far as our fees are concerned, it's not, it's not, we, we, our, our fees have been meeting our expenses.
Correct.
And they've been meeting our expenses for, for quite some time.
Correct.
So, it's, it's not necessarily a thing that we needed to have raised rates as we thought. We did it last year by dollar, because Teresa was very proactive in her looking at the numbers and looking forward as far as our next truck, and this is gonna put us in a position to buy our next truck. We're not gonna have to take out any more debt. So she started this program last year, it's already generated fifty-two thousand dollars or so, fifty-five thousand dollars that we have set aside, and every year, that's what that's gonna generate. So if we stay, and that's if we stay and continue to do what we're doing right now, not changing anything. We'll have the money to replace our current garbage truck, when the time comes to replace it, we'll be able to do it again. So-
The difference there is, we are putting-
Not the five new trucks that we need now, though, right?
This is on a different program.
Correct.
This was with the anticipation of keeping the type of truck we have now, the two guys on the back.
I get that.
Right now, we know, that's our number one goal, is to get them off the back of that truck. The only way to do that is you have to go to the one-arm truck, which is about a hundred thousand dollars more per truck. So, that's why it's changing things.
Thank you.
These one-arm trucks are very, a lot, lot more moving parts, a lot of hydraulics, and so it's, it'll be a, maybe a challenge for us. But we are, the fee schedule that Teresa has been working with, and, you know, if it's what it is, as it currently is, it's, I don't think anybody's gonna argue with it. So, I think we'll be in, in good shape, you know, going forward, if we keep this in-house.
Just to clarify too, on the question with the truck, with the anticipation of us needing to replace the existing truck, there's gonna be about a hundred thousand dollars less than the new trucks. However, if we switch trucks, we now have to get two of those, because we're going to a whole different type of operation, where right now, if we were just to buy an existing truck like what we have now, we have backup trucks for that, if one of those goes down. We won't have that backup truck if we buy the new automated trucks, so. And with, like it was the mayor had said earlier, we pick up trash every single day, not like another community who picks up once a week. So if that truck goes down, we don't have time to have that truck sitting idle somewhere waiting to get fixed. We have to have a backup truck. Otherwise, as you know, your trash isn't getting picked up for a couple days, three days, we don't know. So we can't revert back to the old-style trucks, because the guys cannot pick up those ninety-five gallon totes to throw in the back of the truck. So, that's why there's a whole lot of changes that have to be worked through.
All right, anything more, any other public comment? Just need your name.
I'm Sherry Parker. I just have a couple comments. I know you said that Republic was the main person, the main company that picks up garbage. The waste management that's in Ottawa, they no longer in, was the, the green and yellow trucks. I just, you know, I-
River City again.
What?
By Republic.
What, I'm sorry?
They were purchased by Republic.
River City.
Well, they were purchased by Republic. Okay, I didn't hear that before. And Martin, when you rode in that truck, was that a truck similar to this one-arm truck that is by Republic, or was that privately owned by Wyonett?
It's privately owned by Wyonett, and it's similar to the ones I think we're looking at. So, they, they own it outright, yes.
One of the things about those trucks, I was working with, with them before, is that they're pretty similar to one another. They have the basic concept, especially if you buy from one company, the workings may change, maybe where, where something is located at, for other purposes, legal purposes, and logos that they have. But pretty much all of them are just about the same, same principles with the hydraulics, the PTOs, the, the engines, transmissions, and all that's pretty much, pretty similar.
And then, as far as our taxes with this new system coming in, you would see that they don't skyrocket, it would be a gradual thing, or similar to what we're doing now.
Yeah, it's not taxes, it's, it is a fee. Yeah, it's a fee, and it's a, go ahead.
As far as raising the fees, that, okay, I used the wrong word, but the fees, would they go quite a bit increased?
No, what we're trying to look at doing is, if they have to go up a little bit, trying to keep it steady. Just keep in mind that we all live in a- Just keep in mind that we all live in the city too. And just as much as you don't want to see your rate go up, I don't either. I'm paying the same thing. So, we're trying to keep it as fair across the board, um, for as long as we can. Um, as long as we don't get ourselves into the situation that we actually take up bigger debt down the road. That's my, my biggest goal. I don't, we don't want to do that, so.
And just, just one last thing. Um, the two gentlemen that were on the back and had been picking up the garbage for years, do they, uh, they promise their job in the city? They won't lose their job?
They actually fulfill staffing shortages that we have with the street departments. So, they were transferred to the street department then. It would, uh, help us.
All right, thank you.
I would say, uh, like, one of those questions that was asked earlier regarding the, the money and revenues that, that the city gets, and I believe maybe one of the reasons, one of us had asked that question is we, we wanted to see how much revenues from the fees do we actually get? And how much does it cost as far as expenses to be able to go ahead and offset that, those? And even though this is a city and we're not in it for making money, you have to be able to go over there and allocate some funds, which, again, the city has not done. Uh, to be able to go ahead and put those monies aside, to be able to purchase the equipment you need, or to have a large amount of money where you don't have to get a lot of debt. You're always going to have debt running the city. It's like, no matter where you go. But you want to eliminate as much as possible. So, that's one of the reasons that, like, these states like that for so long, that you weren't able to get a lot of, a lot of the money in there to be able to go ahead and do this. And if you look at everything else, everything around you does go up. And to see smaller increments of an increase, uh, per household hits the pocketbook a lot less than actually hitting somebody with a big increase all at once.
Thank you.
Uh, public comment? Just, uh, your name, state your name.
Yeah. I'm Cindy Olson. Um, I guess first I'll say, I, you know, thank you all for taking so much time to research. I know it's not an easy, um, question to answer, so I appreciate the amount of time you put in. Uh, I want to clarify something. For the recycling containers that we're looking at bringing in, uh, what's the size of those? Are they ninety-five gallons as well as the garbage container itself?
There's a couple of different options that we can go, maybe ninety-five, sixty-five, thirty-five, I believe. Um, so, it, it's going to be a decision we'll have to make then, which is the most feasible for everybody. Um, with the recycling. And I, big for garbage, I think we're pretty much in the same agreement, there should be ninety-five gallon totes for those. Um, recycling is kind of up for discussion still, so. But we do want to get the recycling inside those totes because I, for one, don't like seeing the recycling blown all over the streets. It needs to be in a contained, container so that we can stop that from happening. Because it's not, our, our hauler's responsibility is to track, track down and chase down everybody's recycling down the street. Um, I know sometimes it's hard to do that, but, or, you know, to make sure it's contained itself, that these totes should help considerably with that. And it makes it quicker going down the road with that one-armed truck, the same way you should do the garbage. It's one person doing it, so.
So, those totes wouldn't, no matter what size, they're not going to hold large boxes or any?
I think you're supposed to break your boxes down anyways.
Okay.
So, you have to bring them down.
Hold it, okay. Um, I guess my next question is, I, I'm equally concerned about the recycling being done properly, which, from what I've read, you know, there's a lot of it that's not clean. And, um, so, are you making any efforts through this process to educate the community on proper ways of recycling? Or, you know, putting maybe instructions on the garbage containers themselves for recycling that, you know, it has to be clean, only these numbers, whatever the rules are for recycling? Is that possible to do something like that?
Yeah, we've done that. You know, we put it in our utility, uh, buildings. We have provided residents with that. I think it's, uh, we've put, it's been on, uh, social media and such. We, we actually, I mean, it, it, uh, I believe the number that was given to me is twenty percent of the recycling that's picked up at curbside is, uh, is contaminated. It just goes into the garbage. We actually have people that will, because we allow, you know, one fifty-gallon container and then a second one for free. And then if you put a third one out, you have to put a sticker on it. And we'll have, we, we do have instances where you'll have people that will put out the two bags, the two containers, have a little bit more, so they put whatever they have in a recycling container and then throw recyclables on top of it. You know, to cover it up. And, you know, it, it, it happens. I mean, it's just, and you're, you can do all the educating you want. You're just not going to change what some people do. I mean, we have people that put garbage in the bottom of, uh, they'll put in lawn bags and then fill the lawn bags up with leaves and grass to get rid of garbage that is, uh, so they don't, that's like you say about the sticker. So, even though they paid for the lawn bag.
Uh, there, there was a lot I didn't know about recycling before, until they had the meeting at the library. So, I think the more education, even though you're going to have people that break the rules, but hopefully if people are more educated, they'll follow the rules. But, uh, just one last note. All the attachments or whatever that goes out with the monthly billing? I don't get that because I do pay for this billing. So, if you do pay for this billing, you never get any of that.
No, that's a good point. You never get a lot of that.
We, we had, we had announcements for the city website.
Oop, yeah, yeah. The one thing about the, uh, recycling, if we go, you know, the curbside recycling, there will be an extra fee for that. You know, you're sending a truck around town a second time, and you're on every street twice in one day. There's fuel, there's labor, there's, uh, maintenance on the truck, the tires, you know, there's, you know, all these factors, these all. So, there will be a separate fee to pick up curbside recycling, over and above what your garbage would be. So, people that want just garbage, they'll just pay a garbage fee. People who want garbage and recycling will pay a garbage and a recycling fee. In our instance, I'm talking if the city takes it. Uh, Republic has the same proposal. So, my thinking is, if people are going to pay to recycle, to have this recycling picked up, they're going to be the true recyclers. They're the ones that are going to take it seriously, in my opinion. I don't know, maybe, maybe you're wrong.
I'm looking at every, every
And two weeks.
Yeah, every two weeks, yeah. When we go, regardless of which way we go, recycling will pick up every, every other week.
So, that's another reason why we want the bigger containers, because you may have two weeks worth of recycling in there. We want to be sure you have enough room to get it all in.
And it'll be, uh, I think it'll be up to the resident on recycling on, on either way. If you want whatever size container you want, you know, you can make that with class and that's the size of the truck.
Okay, thank you.
Speak your name.
Janice English. Um, will you share with us the cost of the trucks that you're purchasing and the totes at some point, if not tonight?
I can give you, um, estimates that we've done. Actually, Clint, you probably know it off the top of your head. Uh, for totes, we're looking at a total of two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars for totes.
That's just for garbage?
That's just garbage? I might have. Um, and for the trucks, uh, do my math here.
Five fifty-eight?
Five, five fifty total? I'm hoping I got very accurate here. What was the total on the truck, Clint?
Um, yeah, well
It's two-seventy-five?
I'm not sure if I have it all figured out with the totes also.
I think it's two-seventy-five.
Yeah, I think it was two-seventy-five. A piece, a piece.
Which is a little bit less than we thought, so, surprisingly.
And, and another question. Um, what is the city's current debt load? I mean, what do we already have that we're, we're
A little over twenty-six million.
I was going to say, it's pretty staggering already. Um, and then, do we have anybody capable of repairing these one-armed trucks? That sound like they're pretty, um, labor-intensive to repair?
They are labor-intensive. It's going to take some training. Um, with the one company that Clint has been speaking with, uh, the first year, everything's under warranty. After that, it, you lose a lot of that. But we, we know we would have to probably contract with that company to do a lot of the repairs. Um, basic maintenance, whether it's, you know, oil, um, whatever else has to happen to it. We can handle that, something else, we do have a mechanic that does that, so.
Yeah, hydraulic, hydraulic oil changes, because you have to change the hydraulics on it after a certain, uh, amount of hours. Um, the, the hoses, the connections. You have to be able to go ahead and make sure you have those connections on hand in case someone breaks, you need to repair it. So, there's a lot of things that, that are done. Um, in, in my experience, we're working with a lot of mechanics. And my family is someone that's, that's really good in mechanics. Any vehicle is mechanical, right? Or electrical, they're really great at it. They can do just about anything, um, from, from tanks to aircraft. Anything like that. The only thing that's needed, sometimes they need specialized tools for certain specific dockets they need to do.
But it sounds like it means that you're going to have to plan on
Yeah, or ask my dad.
Some sort of a contract with somebody for the maintenance of it. And then you
Anytime you add more mechanical stuff, as my dad taught me, you add all these computer things to things, things have more chance of breaking. So, um, we, it, but it's something that we're aware of. And that's where the second truck really comes into play. Because chances of something going wrong is highly probable. And we can't afford to have that truck down. So, that's, that's the pickle we're in.
Exactly. And then, lastly, um, is there any chance the public will be allowed to hear Republic's proposal? So that we have some way of, of comparing and, and helping the council to make a, a reasonable and best decision for the city as a whole?
Yeah, actually, I, I mentioned two Republics that were, they were on the agenda for tonight. And we took them off so we could have this discussion. But I did mention to them that, you know, they could come back and make a presentation into the council once we've had this discussion. Now, we can do that, you know, in a number of ways, because again, time is, uh, essence. We can, uh, I don't know, if you work with enough, enough time, you could have a special meeting. Or we can just wait and push things back one meeting and have Republic present two weeks from, or actually, it's, uh, two weeks from tomorrow, I think, at our next Scott City Council meeting. And push things back just, uh, two weeks. But, uh, we can discuss that and, uh, I don't know which way will be.
I'd like to see him come back next, next meeting. But we have a proposal, so.
We could do a special meeting. I think, you know, if we can put it, if we get the word out, uh, soon, we can do it like a week from tonight, for instance, if, if Republic is available. And then we can put this off, uh, for a week from tonight for a special meeting for the presentation and then
It's Valentine's Day, that may not go over real well. Let's talk about your, um, significant others.
Well, we can do it any day of the week, actually. So, we could do it
I'm a great man, I'm, I think.
Well, we'll do it.
We could do it Tuesday. We could do a special meeting on Tuesday and that puts our council meeting a week out.
Yeah.
So...
Well, thank you. Thank you for allowing us to speak and ask questions, for all the work you've done so far.
And if we have a special meeting, we'll get the word out. And again, it's, uh, however you get your news, um, just watch the source and we'll get something out there. Speak your name again.
Chris Cotton. Just a quick question. Is the price of the truck going up as fast as inflation is on other vehicles? And what's the turnaround for getting the vehicle if they, if you thought on that and made that decision?
Great question. Um, with the situation with vehicles, we had anticipated about an eighteen-month build out. Um, however, we've been told they're looking at this fall, that it could potentially. Uh, we also learned that the older style trucks are actually, older style, what we call the, the two guys on the backs of the trucks that we have now are actually not being made as much. So, those are actually kind of a little bit harder to come by than the newer ones. So, um, it's not as far out as what we had anticipated. Um, like I said, my goal in what I've talked to the council about already is letting guys off the back of the truck. What's the timeframe for that? And fall for me is still a long way out.
If you place an order, does it freeze the price?
Mm-hmm.
We also have to put a third down, so. Just speak your name.
My name is Jerry Coglin. And I have always been impressed with the way you guys did the garbage. I mean, I've never had any complaints about, you know, against recycling and everything else. I think you should just keep it in house, personally, because you've demonstrated you can do stuff. Uh, I've lived here almost thirty-five years, so, I mean, I'm, I'm pretty impressed. However, if there's going to be a separate charge for recycling, I mean, I put out more recycling than I put out garbage. I mean, I'm, you know, my, my wife is really into it too. But if I've got to pay a separate fee, I'm on a, we're both on fixed income. I just took a part-time job at McDonald's to even supplement the income. And the minute you do that, you know, I know the money is eating, everybody's in the same boat. You know, I'm no better off than anybody else. But, um, if there's a separate charge, I'm just going to put more garbage out. You know, and, and I don't want to do that. I mean, I can, I know everything goes up and everything, but charge, charge, charge. But, you know, I'm, I'm chasing my tail by the time we're all done. So, I just wanted to
You know, I, I totally get it.
I just wanted to put my two cents in. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other public comment? Speak your name.
Stephanie Van Oostendt. Um, just because Jerry brought this up. My neighbor puts out, her rubbish is elderly, um, and puts out garbage once a month, once every three weeks. It takes us about two to three weeks to fill a garbage can. We don't have kids at home anymore. There's a number of retirees in town. So, the whole idea about ninety-five gallons for everybody is not necessarily the most efficient. It's especially using cost difference. And so, just as you're thinking about things, that might be also something else I'm sure you are considering that's not every household. I know our neighbors have four kids at home and I give them my ninety-five gallons for theirs and probably can see a better return on that. But, um, you know, I, it, this is not an easy discussion. I, um, also just want to clarify something that everyone seems to be talking around. No matter what happens from this point on, there's going to be an increase because we're either going to have to spend the money on the equipment and the training and the schooling and all the stuff that comes with it, or we're going to contract it out. It's not that by keeping Princeton, we're going to be able to keep these same rates. Is that correct?
Yes.
In a, in a nutshell. So, somewhere along the way, that is going. Um, and then, the last thing I will only say is, we all know that space and, and getting rid of garbage is becoming a problem throughout the country for multitudes of reasons. It is not going to get any cheaper to keep getting rid of it. The only way to actually offset costs is recycling. And maybe it might be good for the community to actually try to improve the recycling rate and get that better rather than say, okay, we give up and we're just going to spend more to get rid of the garbage. Thank you.
On the totes, um, totes choice, you know, we've talked about this. And, uh, I think we can put something in place that, you know, we start out with ninety-five gallon totes, and that's what everybody knows. But if you wish to have, uh, the third sixty-five or thirty-five, give us a call. And that's what we'll, we'll put you down for. And it'll actually reduce our costs. If more people request sixty-five to thirty-fives, that figure that Teresa gave is going to go down.
Well, I, I wonder about a letter to residents, giving them the option? And if we don't care about it for some reason, they get the ninety-five? But, you know, you make a good point about all the residents and like that, and people with smaller households. My kids are moving out, I still got one home, but we don't want as much for everybody. I have five people in the house and I have, you know, I have three. So, it does, uh, it doesn't make a difference for a lot of people. And I think that it might be a good way to take care of it.
There'll be a window for that, for these, for the residents.
This is a perfect time to re-educate the community overall about recycling and general governance of recycling. Yes. If we, whatever we do, this is a perfect time to somehow get the information out of them. It's important, right? We need more people to do this.
You know, the, the odd thing is, is, you know, Princeton was like the first community in this entire area to offer recycling. We were, like, the first one. And then we had them, you know, we made it, uh, even more, we made it convenient than we offered the curbside recycling pickup. And back then, you had to separate and you had to wash and you had to peel the labels off the cans. That's what, what the requirement was. We had one of those trucks that had the bin. So, we had paper in one, cardboard in another, it was down the line. So, at, at some point, we made it even easier. And we said, just throw everything in a bin. We'll just take it. Just put everything in a bin and, and we'll take it. Then we had the recycling out of the, uh, out of the recycling barn, uh, for a drive-through. So, and then, we, we started, uh, you know, electronic recycling before Republic even, you know, bought our transfer station. We did a citywide, started a citywide electronic, uh, recycle, recycling We did a citywide, started a citywide electronic, uh, recycle, electronic recycling. And that's a real, that's a real difficult, uh, you know, issue to tackle what we did. And now Republic offers that once a year. So, you know, we've been very pro recycling. It's just kind of surprising to me that we only have like a forty, forty-five percent of recycling for a day. So that's what we obviously, and I think what we do here with serious recyclers, maybe, you know, I'm just, you know, I don't know, I could be wrong, but I'm hoping it increases the numbers. And, you know, the education's important and we have to continue to do that, but, you know. Just speak your name.
My name's Larry Lawson. I live on South Main. I want to talk a little bit about customer service. If, if I have a problem with the garbage, I can call out to the bar and talk to those guys. And if I can't quite get what I need, then I can get good help from Pete. And if I can't really get it and I need to elevate it, I can get ahold of you. About three weeks ago, I had a commercial question, which I knew the city didn't deal with. Um, so I called the transfer station and the lady out there said, well, you need to get ahold of the, um, the dump up at, uh, Dixon. Okay. Do you have a number? Yes. It was a four-three-four number. I said, well, that's Ottawa. Well, that's the only number I have. Okay. So I called over there and a guy in South Carolina picked it up. And I had a hard time understanding him, one, I'm getting old and deaf, but in South Carolina, he had no idea what I wanted to talk about or how to deal with it. It was obvious that that was where we were at, that he could not help me. So I Googled the phone number for the Dixon, um, landfill and called there. I ended up with somebody in Kentucky. She was helpful. She at least gave me some ideas and got me pointed down in the right direction. And, um, but still, right now, if I have a problem, I can call the bar. And if I can't get what I need, I can talk to Pete. And if I can't get what I need, I can talk to you. Not have somebody in South Carolina pick up the phone because I called Ottawa, not have somebody in Kentucky pick up the phone because I had to Google a phone number up at Dixon. That's a major reason why I don't like the idea of Republic. And I know they want, they will tell us all that they're very good with your customer service. You guys are better.
Any other public comment? Come here. One?
Yeah. He said we only got one company and it doesn't make a difference. Over at the Spring Valley Boat Club, we had one company. We got River City in there and we've cut it about a half. So, you know, that's, you can negotiate. So just a thought. And one other thing, this thing is wonderful, but back there you can't hear it. Me and this lady back there are having a heck of a time listening to you guys, so if there's a volume knob someplace, it would help to turn it up for us.
Oh, thanks for that. Yeah, we haven't heard that, so I appreciate it.
Oh, okay.
Public comment?
I want to take a motion to adjourn. Agreed to meet.
I move that we adjourn our meeting this evening and reconvene on Tuesday, February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two, seven o'clock, here at City Hall.
Motion to adjourn. Call.
House member Newman. Gomez. McCrancy. McCall.